Well, she's got her own toes in.
She just keeps sharing her.
I try to get mom to do that. Well, now if your mom opens up, I'll come see her.
All right.
Yeah, because everything you do.
I know.
Well, he's on a pedraski, and he's on a walkway, and he needs to have W P replaced.
I would just be.
They're eighty-four years old, they're eighty-five, and you don't find out. They're barely free going out.
They're still moving?
Yeah.
That's good.
I don't know what will happen to the home rates, and then I have to go. There are people who are beginning to emergency rent with their families.
Good morning. Are you good? All right.
They moved you back to the front, David?
Apparently my bald spot was too prominent on the video last time, so I had to ask you to move over. Yes, and alleged friend of mine told me, alleged friend of mine told me he saw a video, and he said it's a good thing we didn't have a beating outside. Because the sunlight, it's like it's all bald spot, and we landed everybody. Hey, but we can see no problem with that. I usually have a camera. Yeah, that's true. I usually have a camera.
You've got to check the back of your hair.
Yeah, and I don't mind stepping out and seeing what I'm looking down at.
Should there be?
You guys have not thrown a sneeze here.
Yeah, Christie said it looked better if you all fight this way. High braining.
Thank you for being here, Phil Stan. We're a prayer, they will. I understand that our pledges are there, that Father God, we just call them, thank you for being blessed. God, we ask that you just join us in this meeting as we make decisions. God, we pray that a protection prevents an attempt for the state to take, and the state says we deal with this open crisis. God, we pray that we always put you first in our lives and our decisions. God, this isn't about us, it's about you, we want to be your servants. We want to lead in God, for you will want us to go. God, we pray that you just please let us continue to bless us as we move forward, be a part of this meeting, be a part of the process, God. God, we just invite you to join us today. Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. I call the order of the regular meeting that the Van Nuys County Commissioner's Board makes, April the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, nine oh five A M. The announcement form is established with all members of the board present. Item number two, discuss and consider the suspension was ready to be admitted of the Commissioner's Court of Probable Sake for April the fifteenth, twenty-twenty. Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion or corrections? Man, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills to be estimated. The bills before you. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Man, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider red eye county bills as submitted.
Oh, yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. Is there any questions on the bills that's already been paid for red eye? Man, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General businesses, any general business we need to be made aware of? I know the workers still not getting emails that they're wanting the census. I have things that county tax was reported, but I remember reminding the public, there's a lot going on in the public, but it is still very important that we get those census numbers in. We want to come census, because that's where a lot of get a federal, state budget comes through those numbers. And so I would encourage the public to continue to fill out and report your census numbers. Any other general business? Any public comments? No public comments? Move to item number seven, discuss and consider his ending of my proclamation declaring a local disaster. It would inspire the matter of this act. We had a meeting, we had a meeting with, yesterday, with District Judge, Judge Martin, Judge Winters, Bartlett, B K McHale, their manager. And Emergency Management Coordinator, Tom McCurry, our district attorney, and Sherrod Thomas. They go over this proclamation, there is some I think we need to modify. And what we did was in Owen, we eliminated paragraph six, which was the limit of large gatherings, eliminated section seven, engaging in other essential outdoor activities. We did add. And we changed. We had changed nine, and made it by eliminating those two, we moved nine of seven, and what it says is businesses and places of worship in accordance with the G A eighteen. Governors report to Owen, Texas, in addition to essential businesses, the following categories of business may be openly published, they're possible. The paper calls it standard by the governor in his report retail, restaurants, movie theaters, museums, libraries, outdoor sports, involve in less than four people. Churches and places of worship in single person offices, which is exactly what he named in his order. It will remain in effect until May thirteenth. That was the, our understanding, Bernard?
Well, that was our understanding, you know, I raised one objection yesterday in the meeting. I think we ought to have another discussion here on one whole thing. My point is that, yeah, the governor's order here is, doesn't fit everything. One side doesn't fit off, the counties, smaller counties, it doesn't, it's not a fit for smaller counties. It really takes away the control of the local elected officials and have any say about their business. It's amazing to me that you can go into a liquor store, because the governor has declared those essential, and fumble around and buy a bottle of whiskey, but you can't buy an appointment, go in and get a haircut. It's just, it's, it's just, I don't get it, you know?
Well, I think it goes with the social discipline.
Well, let's start trusting our people to social discipline. Let's start trusting our people to abide by the C D C rules that's given out there.
Okay, so you believe in social discipline?
Yeah, I believe in social discipline.
So having to get a haircut, that would stay six feet apart?
Well, okay, you follow the C D C rules and regulations, you have, you have funds, you have a mask, the participant has a mask, I mean.
Did you stay six feet apart?
You can't stay six feet apart, but, but you know, come on. You're, 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 one person in there, one person at a time. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. Whatever, I mean, that's just not.
And it's difficult, it was very difficult, I think, Con, Con was with us today, it's difficult to follow those governor's orders when they're changing every day. If you would like to address, you may address.
And a lot of it doesn't make sense to me either, but the bottom line is that now the governor has made it clear that counties or cities don't have the authority to open anything that he has known. I know a county tried to do that yesterday, they've already been slapped down. It's Department of Licensing Regulation has issued a press release that says that they will jerk the license of these salon that does that, because it's in the lines of the governor's order. Dallas is already, they've had some salons try it, they've been issued citations, all of that. I agree, I agree, a lot of that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense.
I mean.
But we don't have people who are trained.
That's my, that's well, that's, that's.
Well, the governor made very clear that the city and the counties had the authority to be strict. He's also came back in his last law and made it very clear that now his orders should precede any other order. So the governor is calling the shots from coming out. He has us all called shots, going into it, if we want to be more strict. But now he's stood there and said, he's taking control. I think all this stuff is not necessary, we don't need to do anything now, because the governor is taking control. He's made it very clear that coming out far, this will be by his orders.
But in, in one point, if we don't have the proclamation declaring a local disaster, then we forfeit the funds, I mean, that we could get back from, is that correct?
That is correct.
The whole state disaster disaster, he's declared a disaster, but it's all prepared. So we're under disaster, and we're not gonna help.
But, but he can't, he can't apply for grants and things like that in moving to county. He can go to the state, but if the counties don't have an order in place, then we don't have the opportunity to apply for those funds, if anything happens over, then anything happens over.
Okay, that's staying in disaster. As far as those stipulations on what people can do, what they can't do, right now, that's not our concern.
And that's what, and that's the reason we reference in accordance with G A eighteen, the governor's report, he's got a paper, he's got a report, got it, reopened, and references that in your, the governor's report to Owen, Texas. So this is basically just a proclamation saying, hey, we're going above the governors. Now, I would like, and the next item that's going to be on the agenda, is the courthouse and other offices closed to public access, or discussion on that. And what we had discussion this meeting is that I would like to add another section, section where, if you look at this section, can you add another section? Eleven. And if you want to cover the next agenda, I would do it, but I would like to entertain the closing of the courthouse, except for central needs, that that gets spot. And add into this amended proclamation declaring a local disaster, add number eleven, the Van Nuys County courthouse and county offices will remain open to the public with full staff by former only beginning Monday, May the fourth. And that's where we bring all the workers back, we bring all the workers back to the county to work with full staff. And like auto restoration, they start registering, leaving, by former, they call, they start registering, they're being, the offices are open, we still operate here at the courthouse, you know, the offices are open, and we're full staff, we bring them back. And by former, they can also, and former come in and we're back with full staff. Now that, and then you would allow the next item that we'll discuss, it would be included in the proclamation you have worked on. Cover, cover. We got them.
Okay, I don't have any problems with it. Is one thing, we're going to, we're going to press that, that is, did you come back?
Well, we can, we can.
So you're saying combine both of them in the one?
I'm just, I'm just saying, add that, that the Van Nuys County courthouse and county offices will be open to the public with full staff by former only beginning May the fourth. And you would add, and add in the proclamation.
Yeah, you want to add that in the proclamation.
And we, we had one thought, you know, and that.
I'm great, I like, I like this stuff, that, out of the box, the churches, stuff like that, with his, his government, the governor's government.
And we, and we put, and we put in our place referred to the following website.
Yes, I did.
Like to go and look, and that is governor's book.
I understand that, if they were coming out, and then we talk about it, you said you talked, one of those lines you mentioned about the churches.
That's correct, churches and places of worship in single person offices.
All we do is, we use they, when we tell them to look at that, and then we tell them, then they come down, and we give them our opinion on what they should do.
But that is exactly what his orders, his things, it's, it's, you, you understand, it's word of order. Is that correct, Con?
Yes, sir.
That's exactly.
This word has a category.
We took that out of his order, right?
Yeah, you see, it's the exact index list from his order, and he actually in that order opens churches up more than they have did. They can have in-person inside services now, according to that order. That's why we put it in there, so people know there's, one, so they will exactly track, exactly, keep them for what every category he's mentioned. But two, the church bar actually opens a lot more than what it had been last week.
And it's not the county saying it, it's, here's, here's what the governor's saying, he's calling the shots, you know, because his order did say that, that's his order supersede, and that's the fact of what he said, supersede any county with this title of order. So that tells you, you're taking, you're taking, all we're doing is saying how you hear it is, you go to his and look it.
Question, on people coming into the courthouse, are we going to test them for insecurity, or is that, have they had a mask, they have to wear a mask?
They have a, they'll wear a mask.
No.
The governor's sure, yes, though.
Temporarily, yes. Lot of venue.
They can't wear a mask, can they?
Yeah. Okay, but we will require them.
You can't, the governor's adjudicated, you can't do that. He said, he recommends you wear a mask, but it's not my idea.
Dallas County, what are the counties saying? Try to make an inventory and then.
Let's remind everybody that the governor's, the governor's in shelter, order inspires the law, so we, that's.
Unless you change.
That's it.
I don't have any, you know.
But you know, that's, you've got to go back to work.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to, to expand, to modify the, it would be the third amended proclamation declaring a local disaster, with those changes, eliminate the paragraph six and seven, and then, and then remove, and then adding what we, what we discussed about the courthouse office, you know, course.
And this is good, that we.
This would be good to make the thirteenth, which is two weeks from today, our next commissioner's court. Second, that, that's. No, that's my motion. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other question or discussion? Man, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight was to discuss and consider signing proclamation declaring a local, I don't know, raise and discuss and consider his meaning, the closing of the courthouse and all county offices for public access, November nineteenth. I believe we just addressed that in the proclamation. Bring it on there. So no action needs to be taken, only item in state duty in the rest, and item number seven, proclamation. Agree? You want to disagree with that? We'll move to item number nine, discuss and consider signing proclamation declaring a local life as motorcycle safety and awareness month. Mike, is there anyone out there for motorcycle safety and awareness month?
Motorcycle safety and awareness.
Represent any proclamation? Okay, I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation of motorcycle safety, whereas a day society finds more citizens involved in motorcycle on the roads of our county, whereas motorcycles are roughly unprotected, therefore more prone to injury or death than a crash than other vehicles drivers. Whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motors, motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle related risks, injuries, and possible casualties for a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. Whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcycles regarding them with the same respect as other vehicles traveling the highways of this country. And it's the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, whereas urging all cities, citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating motorcycle, riders, motorists alike, to give each other mutual respect. There's a motion to approve the proclamation of motorcycle safety. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, now therefore, I've done, I've judged off through Patrick, and judge together with commissioners of the court of Van Nuys County, will hereby proclaim the month of May as motorcycle safety and awareness month in this county. Whether our job residents do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Item number ten, discuss and consider extension of, from the Van Nuys first law, Ron Barret's sponsor act, for certain key employees, Van, Van Nuys area. Then we're on item number ten, discuss and consider extension of the Van Nuys first Ron Barret's sponsor act for certain key employees.
Okay, that's something that our Texas Association of Counties representatives, they had a webinar to discuss this, and if we were to waive, give this one, three, and five. The ones that I identified with you, what that does is keeps our key and essential folks, mainly our law enforcement and our road and bridge crews, from utilizing those various exemptions of the F S C R A. But they still, if they are to become ill, or if they're caring for a family member who is ill, they still get their full benefit of that F S C R A. So exempting them ensures that we have the personnel necessary to conduct business, to maintain our jail, to maintain our patrol staff, to maintain our roads and bridges. That's what we got.
Do you have anything? Ah, okay. Okay. Is there any questions for Dan?
I was thinking that we should probably have these, these one, two, three, four, five, and.
we should probably have these, these one, two, three, four, five and six, uh, the qualifying reasons for the, like we should have the, you know, uh, I don't know if we can take those away, those exclusions away.
We can. Um, in that webinar with Texas Association of Counties, that, there was a bunch of people in there discussing if it was a, a possibility to do this. They agree that yes, it is a possibility if those people are key and essential to maintain our roadways for emergency services. That's key and essential. Maintain our jails. That's key and essential. And to maintain our ability to provide law enforcement throughout the county. We've got to be able to do those. So that's where this exemption comes in.
So if I think you're saying, I, I guess you're saying that those key personnel, emergency workers are really not eligible for administrative time during these.
Administrative time is a whole different thing.
This is just an exemption from the famous harsh Rollfire Response Act.
That's correct.
And when this is over. It's right.
This would be.
Correct.
The way I understand it, anybody who's a manager, we have, uh, exempted people that we have there.
That's correct.
Everybody else is manager, that can't really want it or not. Well, we don't have a choice, so.
Right.
I get it where we want it.
Is there a motion?
Uh, I might motion the Van Zant County here is deputy dispatchers, corrections officer, juvenile supervisor officer, road and bridge employees from items one, four and five of the FSCRA. Uh, this is called it, not the.
Good. That's motion is our second. Motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any others questions or discussion?
Let me just say one thing. So, so what do you want? Example number five, you want to see someone for a kid or her child in school or place of care is closed. Our, our childcare provider is unavailable due, due to COVID nineteen.
That's correct.
No, no, the other means they can still come to work. If they exempt them, they cannot come to work. They cannot come to perform the very essential duties.
Right.
So this exempt them from that so that they, to require that, that they can still come in. If you don't exempt them, one of these guys are better. You're not.
Well, why wouldn't you want your employees to take care of their child?
They still can't. They still can't. They say, I'm staying here. I'm not coming again. But if you don't exempt them, they don't have, they don't have, they can't play it. I don't want to come to work with them.
Right. So, uh, it's now been determined the school is not going to start. If Chief Bates has a deputy whose child is no longer in school, that deputy would be off work until September. It's far better than we exempt them and let's find a way that they can get their child care by some other avenue instead of that employee staying at home until the school is started.
What do they do to some reason?
I don't know. My children are all grown. I don't know if they.
Childcare is supposed to be open.
It is.
For children that are sent to.
It is. An even wider swath than that, I can tell you.
Some more, some more.
And, yeah, I don't, I would agree. Some might be.
Any other questions or discussions?
Let's talk this in, uh, before we hear you for an individual subject in order to try and one or self quarantine as described in. So. So you're going to make somebody come to work?
No, I don't want to make.
It's allowed.
Okay, it's, it's, it's confused that, well, they don't want to.
Can't make them?
Can't make them. Is that your opinion?
That is my opinion, sure.
That's what I wanted to say.
I just wanted to make, yeah, get that clear that what we, oh, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye. Both, both sign and sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider holding if you work at home and live on administrative time during the current health practice. And we cover some of that by adding that paragraph. I mean, yeah, that section in the, where it said the Van Zant County courthouse and county offices will remain open to the public. Will stay out by four and a half weeks, uh, beginning in May of four, twenty twenty. I think you covered some of that. That's why that is the discussion we made with the proclamation. And then, hey, everyone's coming back to work. Right. Do we need any action on that?
Not necessarily. Uh, because in, in my opinion, from my perspective, it seems like we're starting to turn a corner on this and things are beginning to open. Had we stayed the course that we had been on, then I would think you would need to provide guidance that that we missed the opportunity to provide way back in March. So if we're turning the corner and everybody is coming back to work, then you likely don't need any action on that.
One half of the, of the, of the best, right? Do we still need?
Well, that's up to you guys. And I know what we talked about in our meeting. We talked about creating a limit of sixteen hours per week. And then it was also suggested twelve hours per week, but if you guys would like to do that, you share the plan.
Well, we put it in a, we've already opened this one. We put it in the proclamation that the Van Zant County Courthouse and county offices will be open to the public with full staff by four months only beginning in May of four, starting Monday. Okay. And so that, I think I didn't go into any action on that. Let us cover this money, Ben.
Yeah. What do we do with that?
Yeah, your, your current policy says that any elected official has the authority to grant paid or unpaid administrative time to any of their employees for any reason up to a cap of eighty hours. Now, during this pandemic, we have people who have exceeded eighty hours, but that's where we missed the boat and didn't provide the guidance to tell people how we would do it. So we just kind of have to wash that, you know, whatever happened, happened. But if we want to make a change for the future, you know, we could easily add, you know, only a maximum of sixteen hours per week or whatever number you set. Uh, you can do all kinds of things. And another, um, item that I thought about in the shower this morning, uh, we have employees who have been granted paid administrative time, yet are sitting on a giant pile of comp time. And Van Zant County has the authority to require employees to burn comp time at the county's convenience. So instead of granting paid administrative time, you could require, um, if you have an employee off for a week, you could require them to use that comp time in lieu of paid administrative time.
Oh, I think they should.
But you have to create that policy.
Good. That would be in our handbook.
Great. And since we're on the topic, I, I wrote it up for you guys. You could just pass the policy. We're a representative general. Actually, I dried off first and then, so page one is the current policy. Page two is what I thought about this more. And it, it just talks about requiring an employee who has approved comp time to use that first before we grant administrative time with pay.
And I mean, like, let me figure this out. My understanding of administrative time is it's not working at home.
No, if you're working at home, you're working.
Okay. So administrative time is just you're off on vacation or whatever.
You're off, not required to report to work, still being paid or not. It's up to the elected official and all benefits continues.
Does that clear that up for you, Chief?
Yes.
That's not what we were told when we started.
Well, it's always been in the policy. The policy's been around since, like, twenty seventeen when I first wrote. So it's, it's been in the policy that whole time.
The only question I've got, it, I kind of shared that in there in yesterday. And then this ministry, and I'll tell you, I mean, I've used it through this, which I was using it wrong, I guess. How we said we were instructed in one way. My main concern is I've had a mission. I've had a deputy injured in the line of duty. And I mean, not just a deputy, but I would have a county employer. Any days is it before workers' comp actually takes effect and starts paying them?
Eight days.
Okay. My point of that is I use administrative leave because I think if a county employee is injured on the job, they should not have to burn their sick vacation or comp time for that eight days.
And you've always had the authority to do that.
But that's one thing I want to make sure is if we put this policy, I still have that authority to put that person paid administrative leave for eight days before workers' comp can take effect. Because I do not believe, so I said, if you're on the job, it should come out there, uh, personal benefits, comp time, sick time.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And, and the way I see it, gentlemen, there's two separate issues here. There's the disaster issue and then there's just the regular admin leave policy. On the disaster issue, like Chief, I was instructed to use administrative leave because I was told that our timesheet are present, are in the present. So those people that have been working from home, I've given out hundreds of hours of administrative leave for people who, my instructions to them were, you be at your house, you be available to be if I need you. You be answering your emails. You be doing things like uploading videos from home, things that can be done on the laptop or phone, but not physically present in the office. So I use administrative leave for that because that's what I thought I was instructed to do. Maybe that's wrong. I can go back through the timesheets and correct that. I do not believe in a time of natural disaster, tornado, um, which we're likely to see, and unfortunately COVID nineteen, which I hope we never see. Uh, I do not believe in a time of disaster that employees should be required to use vacations sick or comp time. I believe that that is beyond their control. Comp time they earn by giving us hours they didn't have to give us. They've earned that. Um, and I believe that it's natural disaster, um, that they should not have to use their comp time. So I, or an injury, they should not use their comp time. So I would personally, as an department head opposing policy that required them to use comp time before at any time could be used, um, in every situation. That's the disaster issue. Then the separate issue is whether we as a county want to, or whether you guys as the administrators, leaders of the county, policymakers of the county, want to limit the department head's ability to put, um, to give administrative leave. It's my understanding that, that we have had a policy that department head can do up to eighty hours a year, correct?
Uh, it, it's very open. It says up to eighty hours. And if you're asking me to interpret that, I say for paper. It, it's right now up to interpretation because it is purposely vague.
Okay. So I might recommend. But, uh, but I would be opposed to any type of limit other than an annual limit. Uh, I, I thought, wrong, it'd be so good to say eighty hours a year. But I would be opposed to any type of limit other than annual. And here's my reason. We have some very, very good employees here. Um, y'all know, I don't want to name names out of public record, but, but y'all know there was a employee who was seriously injured, um, last fall and needed more, uh, needed somebody that didn't leave to make sure that she got a pay check. Um, and I think department heads who supervise those employees, who know which ones are, are worthy of it and which ones aren't, if there are any that aren't, should have the ability to give a full week's worth, a full two weeks' worth after they've used all their personal leave, including their comp time, um, in, in the situation of a personal disaster. Um, um, an, an illness, an injury, a car wreck where they're, where they're totally incapacitated for a while, um, having forbidden cancer treatments where they're totally incapacitated for a while, that type of situation. I, I, I believe the department head, not without limit. Certainly, but I believe the department head should have the ability, um, to do that in some amount, maybe eighty hours a year.
And they do right now up to eighty hours. It also says you can exceed the eighty hours with prior approval of the commissioner's court. So given an example like an injured employee who's out for X number of weeks, there's plenty of time to come to the commissioner's court to say, hey, I need more than eighty. I need a hundred and eighty. There's plenty of time for that. And the policy, the way it's written allows for that.
The other issue that I have at the sheriff's office on administrative time, one of the, the other issues that I use administrative time for is, uh, that's how a lot of times, uh, if we have an internal investigation, I have to put that employee on administrative leave. Depending on what he's either with pay or without pay. And sometimes that can go in to, I would say, one, four, it's been about two months, I believe. But I have to take that person off administrative leave. So I understand what you're saying, but, uh, there's still certain circumstances, if there are, uh, often law shooting or kind of natural, we're in administrative leave, uh, this variation on whatever. And then neither may the issue is not that somebody is in the line of duty. I just don't believe that they should have to use their personal channel. It should be administrative time. Well, I, I, I think it's all covered. Y'all, y'all answered all the questions. It's got to be per year because if it was per month, y'all can get the paper to you now.
Right.
Unless you're on the court. So it's got to be per year, but you wouldn't have to come as a court. And if it's a year and you can get more than eighty, all you've got to do is come to this court and say, hey, I've got this guy here to think. This is what happened of this person. I said, yeah, this person, this is what happened. And I'm petitioning this court to exclude this from more than ninety dollars. Our whole deal is right now, you did exactly the right. We wanted you to put that in, even though your people were working from home. We wanted that in at that time so we could track it. And what else there was a smoke up there that we might be, get reimbursed with Austin.
And I noted, I noted, and then, and then in the notes I put up a note.
Yeah. All right. You did it right.
And I'm with you, Commissioner. I think eighty hours per year. I'm just, as a department head, a post would be lower than that. And that's why I understood you did that.
And tell me, when you talking about an off duty injury or on duty, when you were talking about that person?
Um, an, an off duty injured, a personal, you know, health like cancer or something like that. Um, right now, as I understand it, the department head has the ability to give, let's say the person has, has laid up in a hospital because of a car wreck on personal time, they used all their sick leave, they used all their vacation, they used all their comp. And I as a department head, we have the ability to give them two more weeks, uh, if, if I felt they were worthy of such. Uh, uh, now for an on duty injury, I, I believe we can pay for that.
Right.
But I just didn't want to see that eighty number lower. Um, especially something like twelve or sixteen before I would have to come back to you. With eighty, you know, I could, there's, like you said, there's time for me to come in and talk to y'all. and talk to y'all, put it on the agenda, just to get your session, talk to y'all. If it's twelve or sixteen or something.
It does a lot of the person, probably, and they, they, they. Another thing, Tom, is not, not we decided that we're moving back to work. What we need to address is the admin time for this COVID-19 thing. That should stop, man.
That's right.
If you don't, if you're an employer that is on comp, and they don't think they ought to be here, and they, they want to take off and burn their comp time, their vacation, they're up in the, they're paying, they're, they're unsafe companies. So I don't know if you need to motion, but I believe you should address that and put that eighty hour down on that. Well, I believe, but.
I believe we need to.
Now you're saying, I mean.
Well, he said it's not an approach. Now I just said eighty hours. He thought for a month period, she thought for a year.
I said for a year, because that is the most generous idea possible to be. Yeah. So here's what I'll do. Based on this discussion, I will bring to you at the next commissioner's court an amended policy, policy two eight nine, to include permits that identifies it as per year. So you don't have to decide anything on that. I'm going to give you to the next commissioner's court for you to approve of that policy.
That, that can come to this court if they want to go over it.
Yeah, that's.
But that's, okay, let's talk about this. In disasters, uh, in disaster situations, deputies and whatever, are they eligible for administration time? First responders? No, I don't think so. You wouldn't give a deputy administrative time if we got a disaster, would you? You'd get comped. You wouldn't, you wouldn't give them anything. You just, you've got to work.
Right, right. Unless you got an injury.
Yeah, unless you got an injury.
Doesn't matter. Uh, I'm not saying that we would be giving a deputy, say, taking off administrative time in a disaster, we got to have all hands on that. It's, I don't even apply that. This guy's just, uh, let's say, well, I, I killed in a scenario. Let's say we're in this disaster, uh, depression right now. I have a deputy that goes out here and gets a law officer shooting.
Yeah.
I've got to leave.
Yeah, there's certain.
Right.
So I, I think we need to, to be active on the level.
With the exception of the, of the.
He's going to complain.
Well, with the exception of there's no more admin time for COVID-19.
Right, they're coming to work. We addressed that as a problem.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that shouldn't be in that amendment, though. He's going to write, that's already taken care of.
Yeah, that's right.
It's already taken care of.
Let, let me come, get a clarification, please. We discussed this yesterday, we discussed the fact. Everything, uh, this point I put administrative COVID-19, and I can't go back and change the previous paper period, etc. Now, for this paper period here, do you want me to continue doing it, uh, for this week, since they're going to come back Monday? Do you want me to continue showing administrative time COVID-19, or do you want me to actually put it, since they're at home and they're on call, and you just want me to show that as?
It will be through Monday.
You know, through Monday.
That is right. I would do the same this, this week here, as, as you've done in the past, and start in Monday, uh, my department. Then all hands are ready, we're all going back to.
No action.
I don't think we.
No, I did raise the one hundred.
No, I, I don't think you're going to bring it back.
Yes, sir.
We'll do no action. Out of number eleven, we'll move to, out of number twelve. Discuss, consider implementing a lax cell in the easy clocking time practice system, the automated time card calculation. Want to address that?
Sure, uh, we're there finally, after eight months of using easy clocking. We're to the point where our IT team and then the developers of the software have got us ready to go. We're, we're currently waiting for the migration of NetData, so that's a minor delay, but they told the IT team that that would be done by Monday. And then he and the developers can take the final steps to pull data out of easy clocking and force it into NetData. So it will take the burden of calculating every day per employee off of the treasurer's office, and now it will be a computerized function. Basically, that's right here. Yeah, so we're ready to do that. My only caution is this puts greater emphasis on the supervisors to ensure that their employees' time cards are correct, because if they are not correct, there won't be a place to fix it. Then, if there's an error and it shows that an employee worked a hundred and forty-two hours, they will get paid for a hundred and forty-two hours. If there's an error and it shows they only worked seven hours, they will get paid for seven hours. So the emphasis is on the supervisors to ensure that their time cards are correct, as it has always been, yet now there will be true consequences for it, the supervisor not doing their part.
I got a comment in the line, uh, you've reached this pretty much area of time, easy clocking is coming up. But I still don't have my sergeants to get on and approve their shift, employees' time sheet. Right now, it's left up to either, uh, the mayor, the captains, get on there and approve it.
We had it that way. I had it that way where your sergeants could approve it, but then you guys were having discussions over there and you wanted to control back to just you and Captain Sheridan group, so I took it away. It can be any way we want.
Well, the problem is, it wasn't working anyway last meeting we had, uh, I said, you said there had to be some modifications, doesn't do IT.
Well, what, what you were asking for was for the sergeants to approve all their people, and then for someone, you or someone else, have oversight over the sergeants to approve the sergeants. It doesn't work that way. If you're an approver, you're an approver. You can approve the people below you, and you can approve yourself. There's no person above you that approves. That's just how it was set.
There's an issue with that, because I've got shifts out here that work twenty-four hours a day. The captain by myself, we don't open that chain hall, uh, it comes back down to us on Sunday morning, sit down and start approving this. I'm approving it basically side by side. You know, sergeants, the way it should work is the sergeant should be able to approve their shift, because they know that in there it will always work. Well, then it should come down to the captain, not when the sergeants work, it should approve their shift. The I should go in, or the ultimate director should go in to be able to approve their tasks. Count the stairs that deal. We don't have that.
They have a gun shop.
You make a stand.
It makes no sense. That, that, you're, I agree with you, that's what it should be. It does, uh, steps of approval, uh.
And I mean, I'll take you, the captain's word, when I, well, first of all, he's right. I can approve of the captains. And that was probably out of the sergeants. I mean, we've got, uh, first-line supervision down here, but nobody approves theirs, because once you have approval authorization, nobody else can approve it. That's just like that. When I turn on, it ain't a lot of parent turn time machine, I fill mine out, nobody, nobody approves mine. But what I'm saying is the sergeant should have.
Could the sergeants look at it and say, and send you an email saying that all officials correct?
I'm not so sure that the sergeants even have access to what they're doing now, because now if somebody likes to study, they have to clock in or clock out or need to exit, uh, exit time or something, and you go to the sergeant, we have to get in to the captain, and maybe I approve it. I spend more time on these clocking now, uh, than I ever spent before, and don't you, I think it's a good thing. But we've got eighty employees out there, well, seventy-eight, but I need to have it to where it's a stairship. Where sergeant can approve his crew, because he's responsible for his seven, six, seven guys. Then the captain is responsible for the sergeants, and then I'm responsible for the captains. And it goes both ways on the operations side and the teaching side. Because basically what I'm doing right now is I'm taking off, approving something that I can't verify.
Nobody said it like that, right?
That's a developer or IT question.
And so we went through this a month ago, and I thought we're going to kind of do that, and we still don't have access.
Because that developer, I mean, this, hey, I agree, I'm sure, that, he should be able to approve anybody in his organization. But somebody that's lower in his organization should not be able to approve you, or the same.
It's just, uh, well, the whole idea of this was to take the pressure off of our county treasurer and not give him.
That was my whole idea, but that was definitely a big part of.
Well, the big part of it hadn't worked out.
I agree, because we haven't taken that step, and I'm telling you, we're ready to take that step.
And where, if that, what do you say?
Let me make a comment. I'm trying to go along with you saying, I don't know about who to prove, why I don't understand you can do that. It definitely, somebody needs to be able to, but we're still going through the issue, but at some point I have to go and process it. When you get to that point, you don't have, well, I'm sorry, the conscious is not proven. It's a opinion. But I mean, so, somebody had one in, whoever that is, me, for my people, had one in, approved it, so they have a hook there, so they, they're just out there. And a good example I, I got yesterday, I'm calling your name, but I had a call yesterday. An employee was short last paper period, eleven hours. I heard about it yesterday, after I run payroll for this time. So my point was, and I got to look at it and see the timesheet, it's not been approved. So if that had been approved, if somebody looked at it, I'm hoping someone will call that at some point, but yeah, I mean, this employee just now came back, there's reason for it, but it just now notified me, oh, I run payroll for this time. So now I've got to figure out how I'm going to get his time approved. But my point is, it's really important for me to make sure you're approved, you're, you're responsible for yours or yours, yours, yours on down. Make sure yours are approved, or who resumes charge of, for me, that don't matter. We, that is, we make someone's look at it. And I, you know, example yesterday, I had one, a guy that only works eighty hours. He had point six of an hour, as it, well, I think that's not right, and I got to get it saved hours. But someone had approved it, so I went with it. Now I checked on the labor sheet, and I was like, that's, that's correct, it was reading for it. But when I see that approved, only that tells me somebody looked at it and they're saying, well, that's incorrect. I don't have time to go check if they ever buy it home, every situation. So I would look at that. And I went with it, because I said, well, it don't look right, but this guy, he's in charge of improvement, he approaches on home. But it comes back, and I'm like, man, you approved it. So that's my point exactly.
But also when I'm going through the deputies, basically what I'm looking for is to make sure there was no this clock ends or this clock outs. And basically all I can do is make sure they got eighty-six hours, because I don't know what you say worth, how many hours they worth. So if there's something in there, they got a rate of six hours, and they had this coffee and clock out, I'll approve it. Then the sergeant will come back and, well, you know, I meant to tell you, because I can't change it, you know? Uh, this happened at two o'clock in the morning or something. Because that's why I leave my tiers before, I can hold my sergeant accountable, when it's to me or the captain, I go down and check him, okay. Why didn't you not catch this?
But if he won't come to you and tell you that before you're approving it, how's he going to approve the time cards? And then you approve him?
Okay, well, actually, we have to work the man, it's the man at the sheriff's office. We work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, we deal with life and death, so I mean, if you have an issue here, the next time you're out on a staff call, uh, the timesheet really don't make a shit.
You're scared.
Sorry. Uh, I'm just telling you, everywhere I've ever worked, in all, fortunately or otherwise, there is a tier to approving timesheets.
Thanks, uh. I think at some point we're having trouble, and we're getting there. And we're, I think we're going to learn every time we run it. There's going to be issues, we're going to see on that form, but I just think there's something around it. It's not going to be perfect for this kind of running. Try to look at it first, press it and see how it goes. I don't, at some point you just go, we've got to do it. We're going to get responsible. There are, I mean, there are bugs.
I agree, it's going to make it easier, especially, you, I, I keep ranting what you're on, but, but I mean.
Well, a misfortune is one for me, one of the biggest issues, people not checking the scene. And there's, I know there's issues. People say, well, I tried to block you, and I tried to block you out. It wouldn't, it wouldn't pay. And I'm saying, I hear that, I understand that. When you don't have that, when you got a misfortune, the computer reads that as, got a misfortune out. This kid's time keeps going, so that's going to change what he gets paid. Probably going to be paid a lot more than possible. Do you know what that has to do with, across, Susan?
I know, I know that I've requested for, on the timesheet, for it to have a break on the forty hours, because I've made errors looking at the timesheets, like if someone didn't come in for a full day or something, and I look at the bottom number and it shows me that they still had eighty hours or eighty-one hours, and I approve it, because I'm looking eighty hours, forty, forty, okay, we're good, except for maybe that first week they missed a day, and they worked over, stayed during lunch or whatever, and still got to the eighty, and then they get paid short because either with you sick time, and that's happened a couple of times, and then they did advise me, hey, make sure you're looking at the breakdown on the fifth day, that's forty. That should be separated. I think that's separated.
And the second employees that are only forty hour, they need to, you should, people, we don't have, I live a total eighty hour.
That's.
But forty hour employees, it doesn't work that. You're going to work thirty-six that first week, you turn around, work extra, next week, got eighty. That, that changes, they're short that first.
But I think it should have, if it would have a breakup, and I don't know if you're telling me it does.
That there, it's not going to be any time soon. We can change that through the right offer, so it's the time period, you can make that longer.
Okay.
See, I have some problem. I mean, my city state, well, district, they're on a forty hour week, but they're scheduled, they work thirty-six hours in one week and three next. And I get called up, and I'll do the exact same thing, I was going to, as long as they have eighty hours, we're good. They don't need to put in a request for, if they have eighty-eight hours, I think they don't need to have this sick thing a year because.
Yeah.
But then I give the thing, and, and Kenny, a lot of that will be by week, so, and that causes another problem with me. I want to figure it out, you know, the forty hour employees compared to my, rest of myself, they've got eighty-six, and two, we're good to go. You know, uh, it's, actually, it's easy to be modeled by.
Dan, are you in a position to say we're ready to make the last step?
I think that we are. There's a lot of discussion going on, but I think all of this can be resolved locally at each individual office. I don't think we need to alter software to fit an individual office's particular needs. There's ways to do exactly what everybody wants to do. You've got to look day by day. You've got to schedule correctly, you've got to validate and approve the time cards. Sure, I'm sure Scott and the developers could alter this software that we bought, but we as individuals and supervisors can do exactly what we want to do.
No, I just worry, I just worry, we, we need to optimize that software, because that's the way it's saying, and then I may be approaching the non-fisherman, we need to be approaching their form. But it is right now, our forms are proven or set, and that is not correct. We also need in that software, when you have missed, uh, uh, somebody that called out, it needs to send a message to that, to that supervisor saying, is this correct? Did this person work for, for five days in a row?
The message is in there, but you've got to go in and look at. You're wanting the system to email you and slide you. When, when we talked about all of this ten months ago, we, as the supervisors and elected officials, we have a responsibility to view that, whether it was the old paper timesheets or this new system. And if the whole heartburn on this is that it's not going to find me, I want a text message, well, we all still have that responsibility to look at these timesheets and time cards, and if you're not going to do it until you get a text, I don't know what to do now.
So that, that was one thing. So if I got, so if a guy goes in there and there's a mistake, and you shine, looks at it, they're the best, they're fine.
There's a little symbol, that this, the caution symbol, it's in yellow, and it's got a big exclamation mark.
And all we need is a tier.
But not on the forty hours, nothing shows up, not on the forty.
Well, let's see the problem now, with my sergeant team, we wouldn't see that, all I can do is turn on. So it's coming back to me, and.
The whole big deal, I think, so.
The whole big deal here is looking at your time sheets, we're not off time sheets.
That's, that's an idea.
Well, yeah, I want to get.
Can you check my stuff?
Sure.
Get to your.
I can play right now, I can. Yeah, I don't know how far they're gonna go with the clock on your software, just the hard scenario. But there are ways, like Dan said, a lot of this would already work. Turn it on, it's important. All we gotta do is get the, do the sergeants to get a look at it. And hope you. Go looking. Yeah, we can move it back to that. We can move it to whatever level. And I I understand what you're saying about I wanna be able to approve my sergeant or my foreman. But if you're trusting that person to approve seven other people, and you don't trust him to approve his own time sheet, maybe that's a problem.
No.
I don't know the justice.
They report on there to work. We have this. I mean, in, you know, not long, I've spent thirty-one years in law for you. That's the way it's worked. The sergeant or court, we invite them into that court law ship, proves his guy, send it goes to sergeant. There's a sergeant, I'm going to lieutenant, lieutenant to the captain, then to, uh, assistant chief of order. So, and I said, we've got any other ways out there?
Not a justification.
I know, and and I'm not, I'm not arguing just for the sake of being argumentative here. I'm saying, we bought software, this is the capability of the software. And I I don't see a way to make it work the way that each of us want, each little component. But we've got something that works, and if we apply our own checks and balances to it. We can get the job done instead of waiting on a developer to try and alter it to fit what he wants and she wants and he wants.
Well, maybe we should check the largest department out there on how many to do things before we went out and all software.
I think we did.
And I think every other department except for public law enforcement or whatever works on the forty. And so I just know because I've had a couple of issues with that, where I was looking at the bottom of the time sheet. As long as I made eighty, I was approving it until I got called downstairs, actually when my employees got paid short. And I went downstairs and then we figured out, okay, you need to be looking, when you look at that first week, make sure they've got the five days in there. And it doesn't tell you they had forty hours, you have to calculate it and make sure it's a forty.
All I'm asking is somebody to check with, with the company that put this out and see if they start to available. I I believe that, oh, I don't believe that a time pocket company would put out a product that you couldn't have tiers of supervision. I just got it, I do, I can't, I cannot concept that in my mind. But all the technology that we had available yesterday. And that, and that what I was asking for, and what I think all of us need, is not right. I believe it's there, I just don't, I just can't get nobody to come find that out.
So for that, are are we ready to take the last step?
I might even move the last bit.
I mean, last step, so I have a motion by. I I'm gonna say this. I'm saying, by the way, I'm gonna say you better, you better fill out a paper time sheet for a while until this thing gets gets off of it.
Right.
And take the last step. Yeah.
Well, we've been doing this for eight months. I don't think we need a paper time sheet.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm turning. I'm saying for our own guy, I'm not gonna need to fill out a time sheet that's foreign.
All of them have access to it on their cell phone. Every employee, down to the lowest level employee we have, has access to see their time cards, schedules, time off, everything on their cell phone. Anybody can do it. You can get on the whole computer, you can see it anywhere you want.
And we never stop to paper time sheet.
Yes.
Because we have to keep the paper to be able to compare it to the.
To the, to the computer. Which is a lot more to do. Have a motion, have a second, any other discussion? Questions? The motion was to implement the last step with these. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Out of number thirteen, discussing Senator Rosebridge, precinct four partition, uh, nineteen ninety-seven, in the National, seven hundred, District of Trump, for twenty-five.
Uh, this is my name, John, I, uh, we found the truck from here. That's it, really good check, it's, it's, I'm surprised. Uh, and we're gonna start doing some chips in on our own, save a little money. And we can't have it through your approach, too. That's what we're doing.
Out of motion?
It's motion.
Second, a second by Commissioner Pearson. Question or discussion? Mr. West, being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Out of number fourteen, discussing Senator Griffin, funding him, site, flat, and precinct two. That's your argument. Man, I believe it just there, I got it out because you couldn't handle it. Thank you. You provide with all the regulations of the, uh, seven seasons and regulations, so I'm making a motion that's be approved. Okay, most by Commissioner. Milton is your second, second, second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Out of number fifteen, discussing Senator Griffin, the father of the state's flat in precinct three.
A judge is ready to notice how, 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 how the whole copy know, like, men have the forms on that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Out of number sixteen. Thank you, thank you for reading here.
Thank you.
The, out of number sixteen, discussing Senator Award of All Same and Top Name, Hot Major, and for Rosebridge, you carry. Same duty, you want to address it for it?
This is the table, we did not award last court. I went back and reviewed, Malcolm was playing his award to go to the county high school. And we did that last year. So I'm okay with awarding Mr. Milton to the county high school and other four years. It is for the course of.
I might get motion to approve, okay, by Commissioner, uh, Devon. Motion by Commissioner Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion for same? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Out of number seventeen, discussing Senator Griffin, a good year, twenty, budget amendment.
So, here's your.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the budget amendment. Uh, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, there is one that doesn't really follow that time. Purple, but it's okay. Assistant DA needed to move from employees down to this lady's computer. She did move some of her, uh, employees that were supplemented out of that fund into another fund. So the funding that she didn't have any operating cost in her budget fund.